I'd like to call this special Board of Education meeting to order on September 29th, 2017. The work of the Wichita Public Schools is to empower all students with 21st century skills and knowledge necessary for success and by providing a coherent, rigorous, safe, and nurturing culturally responsive and inclusive learning community. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. Under Public Communications, we have two persons registered to speak tonight.
Thank you for coming. Don McMahaney?
McMahon.
McMahon, if you would come up. I want to remind you that the topic has to be on tonight's topic, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address this honorable body this evening. Today you have an awesome responsibility of appointing someone to fill a vacancy on your board. This is a responsibility that I'm sure you do not take lightly, but frankly, unless you know these individuals on a personal basis, it can be difficult for you to make a choice and choose the very best. Our schools are charged with providing our children with the best education possible, and yet in recent years, it's been difficult to find the funds necessary to do so. We never know how our children will affect the world that we live in. Both of my sons graduated from South High. My youngest, while working locally as an engineer at Cessna, acquired his pilot's license and then went on to be certified as an A&amp;P mechanic, finishing top of his class. Today, he works locally at Tru, which is a division of Techtron, teaching aircraft maintenance. People come from all over the world for that training. Before you is one who will work tirelessly to ensure that all of our children have the education necessary to make their dreams come true. He's been honored twice this year for his community involvement. That's not something that a novice gets, but someone who has had years of service. He's worked in a variety of volunteer and leadership roles in various places such as West High, doing things such as a protected crosswalk, Trusdale, Community Policing and Student Safety, Cleveland Elementary as President of PTA, Neighborhood Cleanup Programs, Riverfest, a member of the City Council's District Board Advisory Board, as a Zoning Appeals Board Member, a member of the Block Grant Committee, serving in Sister Cities Board, involvement in both police and fire academies, Cars for the Cause Charity Car Show, turning the automobile car show into a charity event, President of the Southwest Neighborhood Association, outreach programs such as United Way, Red Cross, NAACP, Convoy of Hope, Senior Projects, Love Wichita, and the list goes on and on. He is one who truly wants our children to succeed and wants to ensure that they have the education to do so. He has proven to be able to work with leaders to get things done for the community he serves. Joshua Blick is truly right for the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul McCullough. Thank you for being here also.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I will be speaking on behalf of Joshua Blick. I am the President of the West High Booster Club for the past six years. Josh has been on my board that whole time. He helped us create a booster club at West High School. There was not one. When my son was a freshman, which was six years ago, we went, I went to the school to get support, and then that's how it was created. Josh helped us create the organization. Kind of nervous, sorry. I've never done this before, but he's well worth it. He did work on the crosswalk project at West High School, which was needed. He helped create a student committee. He said this needs to be student-driven because this is for these kids' safety. He helped create that committee. He was a communicator with the city and the district, and he did a fantastic job getting that project completed, and now the kids have a safe way to get across the street for the future. It's really hard to sum up in three minutes all the positive things he has going on in his life. He's sat on many boards. He gives to the city. He does not know how to say no. He is just such a positive person to be around. He has, did receive a Volunteer of the Year Award from the Riverfest Organization this year, and also received another award from the state. He's just the type of person that will go above and beyond of what is needed of him. He, no matter what the job is. He's helped with car shows. He's helped, even now since his child has graduated two years ago, he is still involved with West High School to be, make it a positive, safe place for the children. And he's just a good candidate for this position. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike?
Under Operations, Board of Education Interviews, BOE District Four vacancy. At the regular Board of Education meeting on September 11th, 2017, Board Member Jeff Davis resigned his position on the Board of Education because he had moved out of the boundaries of USD 259. At that meeting, the Board approved the publication of a legal notice in the Wichita Eagle regarding the vacancy. The Board also approved an application and interview process. The legal notice was published on September 14th, and it provided interested persons until noon on September 28th to submit completed applications and letters of reference. An application form, BOE District map, and other information was available on the BOE section of the district website from September 14th until noon on September 28th. Each qualified applicant submitted a complete application with three letters of reference, is a resident of BOE District Four, and is registered to vote. Tonight, the Board will interview all qualified applicants. The interview sequence is based on the order in which applications were received. Applicant number one is Stan Reeser, number two, Tanya Rippey, and number three, Joshua Blick. This item provides the opportunity for the Board to interview applicants and to take other action regarding this process.
Hopefully, I'll only take up one chair.
Stan, I want to make sure that we discussed earlier, we'll go through each of us, have a question, and then give you some time to answer each one, and then after that's done, there'll be some, if each individual Board Member wants to have a question for you, they'll do that, and at the end, you'll have an opportunity to make any statement you'd like.
Okay, sounds good.
We're going to start with Joy Akins.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Ody?
Yes.
When we talked last, and when I checked with you yesterday, we could ask up to five minutes worth of questions, so if I have kind of a two-parter.
If it's, is it on your topic?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, great. Well, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Joy.
Person, Mr. Reeser, thanks for your phone call the other day to introduce yourself, and thanks for taking the time to really apply for this. This is, as you know, an important job and role, and I always say it's the most, one of the most important roles in our city because it has such a long-term impact.
I agree.
So, my topic is on community involvement, and the first question I wanted to ask, you talked a little bit on your application about your involvement in PTAs and PTOs and site councils where your children were members. I'm wondering, outside of your child's school or classroom, how have you partnered with our district or other common stakeholders that our district has to serve our city?
Well, you know, I guess I'd have to answer that kind of broadly in that I have basically been involved in the city and school board. I used to say, when I was on the City Council, I used to say, if you think our job is tough, you ought to look over at the school board, see what they're doing, because they've got the really tough job. But, you know, I think everything I do has something to do with community. My daughters joke with me all the time, saying how, basically, I've been more of a, more involved in the city and the school than I have in their own lives, but it's really kind of a process of which everything that I do, it has to be connected with community at all. To me, that's everything.
Another question I had is, can you give us an example? So, when we work with the community, there are people who have competing ideas or even contradictory ideas to us, and so somehow, as Board Members, we need to engage them. So, I'm wondering if you can give us an example of a time when you had to engage people who had different or competing values to work together on a task, how you did that, how you went about it, and what the outcome was?
I think probably maybe the best example I can give on that is when we were on, when I was on the City Council, we had to come up with a new way to do this process. We had a vacancy on the Wichita City Council, and it ended up being a vote that went 26 ballots, and the City Council, the City Attorney had to break the vote. And Greg Ferris and I, Greg and I are probably philosophically 100% opposed to each other on most things, but we've always kept things friendly, and he and I got together and basically came up with a new process on how to fill vacancies, which they still use today. And I mean, that's probably the most concrete example I can give you, just off the top of my head.
Okay, that's a good one. All right, and then just last question, can you tell us about some other key relationships you fostered along the way that might be beneficial if you were added to the Board?
Well, I think right now, I'm on the Wichita Transit Advisory Board. That's one reason why, one of my letters of recommendation I wanted to give you was from a staff member there. I wanted to show that I was a type of person that can be a good Board Member, come prepared for the meetings, treat staff with respect. To me, that's a really big thing. I think one thing, if you look back on, if you ask people who worked at the city when I was on the City Council, I think every single staff person, even though our only employee was the city manager, I think you'll find that every single city employee would say Stan Reeser always treated them with respect. So, I want to, and that's very important to me, and that's very big to me, so that's why I put that in there. But specifically, more to your question, though, which was again?
It was just about some key relationships you fostered that might help you if you were on the Board.
Sorry.
It's all nerve-wracking to be.
Yeah, I'm out of practice for this.
I'm a little nervous, too.
Yeah. I'm on the Wichita Transit Advisory Board, and basically, there's a lot of, one of the big keys we're doing right now is we're trying to reach out to the big employers in town. So, I've been in several meetings with our biggest employers, talking about ways to get our bus passes out to them. So, obviously, I've stayed connected with a lot of people at the city throughout the years, and also through my volunteer work at the schools down in the south part of town, a lot of educators, a lot of volunteers for this, a lot of volunteers for the school system, relationships there.
Great. All right, those are my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Barb?
Thank you.
Would you, we probably ought to let them know what our category is before we start asking questions. I didn't think about that.
It was just a board-to-board relation. You've only told me five times. No, board-to-board.
Okay, board-to-board.
Relationship of a Board Member to another person that's interested in the Board of Education, and I looked your, Paul, your information over, and it's very evident that you do understand what a Board of Education does.
Yes.
And I appreciate, excuse me, do you want me to start over?
No, no, I heard that.
Okay, thank you. Do you think the board relations is important for the success of the district, and why?
Well, because we have to set an example. Unlike the City Council, where you could engage in fierce, at times fierce, political debates over philosophical differences, the school board I see as slightly different. You do, I do not see this as a political job. I see this as a community service job. You have to set an example that you can work together as a team so that you can show the rest of the school district and show the schoolchildren how things can be done in a civil way. So, I think that's the biggest difference, and I think, I think that's the thing I've gotten better at as I've gotten older, is it does not do any good if Stan Reeser wants to proclaim his wisdom to the world. If I don't, if I don't have four other, at least four other people, and preferably, six other people, there's really no need for the whole world to know what Stan Reeser thinks. But if Stan Reeser, along with four to six other Board Members, can attest to policy and influence policy, then that's important, and that's how it should get done. So, yeah, board-to-board relationships is very important.
And you learned that through the council and different things?
Yeah, and sometimes I learned that the hard way.
You did. Well, there's six of us up here, do you want? Thank you.
Okay, and my question will come from the board to superintendent relations, and it is two-part, and I'll read it and fill it in as I need to. First of all, do you believe it is important to establish a positive relationship with the superintendent?
Yes, very much so.
Then, could you give me the steps that you would put in place personally to be sure that occurs?
Well, communication is the key. I mean, I look forward to working Ms. Thompson. I think it's very clear that this board sought out, when the superintendent's position was open, I think this board worked very hard at appointing Ms. Thompson, and you worked very hard at finding the right candidate. So, as a new school board member, the last thing I would want to do is come in and try to poison anything, so, but again, it doesn't do any good for one Board Member to go off on a tangent on a superintendent or another school board member, because that's just one person's opinion. Until you get four or five, six people to agree with you, it's really, you know, unnecessary to go in that direction. It is important to know, I mean, the superintendent is your one employee, and so you are not going to want to unnecessarily damage any kind of relationship you have with the superintendent. Plus, I'll be quite honest with you, Ms. Thompson knows far more about education than I do right now, and probably always will. So, I would rely on her quite a bit for information, and I look forward to working with her.
Okay, thank you.
My question's on diversity. Wichita Public Schools is very diverse. What part of the diversity, what part does diversity play in the Wichita Public Schools in your mind?
Well, I, I think that, I love this question, because this is one of the things I wanted to point out, was I think you noticed there's a real momentum going on in Wichita right now. A lot of pride going on with our city flag, with various things that you, you see, the open streets thing, we just had this last weekend, and one of the big drawing points, and I tried to make this point back in the 90s, and was that we should, we should celebrate our diversity in this city. That's a drawing card. Not everyone wants to live in the suburbs where everybody drives the same kind of car and has the exact same kind of a lawn, and it, my grandchildren and my children, we were always determined to keep them in Wichita Public Schools because we knew they would meet people from all different types of walks of life, and that's important. And I think cities nowadays, and I think Wichita is finally starting to understand it, is that we, our diversity is our strength. Yes, there's going to be controversies every once in a while about that diversity where people don't understand where each person's coming from, but the more the school district can emphasize the fact that if you want your child to learn in a diverse situation and celebrate diversity, Wichita Public Schools is the place to come. And you are competing with, and I'd like to, hopefully someday, say, we are competing with other school districts, and instead of shying away from that, we need to embrace that and emphasize that.
All righty, thank you. Lynn?
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeser. I'm going to ask some questions about the budget.
Okay.
Please explain your experience with budgeting and your level of understanding of government financial documents and forms and things of that nature.
Yes, I think I put in my application, I thought this might be one area that I might be able to jump in and hit the ground running. It's important to understand that public budgets are different than personal budgets, and they're different than private business budgets. And one thing that people have a hard time understanding is that your bond budget is separate from your operational budget. And I love numbers, I love to crunch numbers, I love to dive into numbers, and I love to try to explain numbers. So, I think that is one area that I think I'm, I would be, one of my strengths is I can, I understand your budget of 682 million. I almost said 682,000, which would have shown that I know nothing about your budget. I understand that 88% of it goes straight to classroom operations. I understand that after the net increase of what the state did, your budget's new income was basically almost $21 million, and though a lot of people want to say 26 million, well, you have to explain where that other $6 million went. I mean, your utilities went up, you're, hopefully, your salaries are going to go up, and et cetera. And so, I think part of the Board Member's responsibility is able to, is to understand these numbers and to jump in and explain to the public, because you're going to be out there a lot in various meetings, and questions are going to come up, and the best thing you can do when things start getting contentious about what the Board is doing is basically give them the facts. You may not be able to change their mind, but at least give them the facts on the numbers.
Thank you very much.
Am I being too long-winded, or?
You're doing fine.
Okay.
This is your opportunity.
Well, I didn't want to go on too long, but at the same time.
If you go on too long, we'll fall asleep.
Okay, sounds good.
You're doing great.
Sure.
We appreciate you being here, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask a question about the strategic plan.
Okay.
And planning. You, one of the questions that you answered in your application was about our mission statement, and obviously, we've all read that, but I think this evening when you came in, you were given a copy of what we call the works, and although I'm not going to ask you questions about that, I wanted you to at least know what it looked like, so as I begin to address this question, you'll have some feel for it. One of the jobs of the school board is to help set the strategic plan for the district and then monitor that throughout, throughout the time, and make changes and adjustments as needed. So, my question has two parts. First of all, how would you bring value to the strategic planning discussion?
Well, first off, I think you have to believe in that type of a process. I've been on boards before, I've been on committees before, where you sit down and you try to develop a strategic plan, and you don't have buy-in from some Board Members because they just don't think it's important. They want to kind of fly by the seat of their pants, as things come up, they'll deal with it then. But as we, as we found with like the Wichita Transit Authority, was that you basically needed to have a strategic plan in place, you needed to have buy-in for that, and so I think that's what you would, and you're, obviously, this group did a lot of work on this, and I commend you for that, and I think you did a great job, and I think as a new Board Member, my job would just, or my point, my job at this point would just be that I support this effort, and I buy into it, and it's your responsibility and our, my responsibility to get that information out to the public the best we can.
The second part of my question is, because Dr. Thompson has a very clear plan to begin to work on the strategic plan, begin to put some legs to it, that her staff then can say, yes, we've met that, no, we haven't. So, what would you suggest, just as you've looked over this and worked in your past, what kind of modifications or expansions do you think we need to look at for our strategic plan?
Well, I got to admit, I mean, I, I don't see a whole lot of difference between my philosophy on what public education is all about than, than what's on this, this information here. I mean, and I think you're, it's good that you're starting to get to the point where, and I think that's why you do, sometimes don't get buy-in, is that you'll come up with a document like this, and then there's no measurement against it later on, and so that's why some people will get frustrated with that kind of a process and say, I don't, you know, I'm not buying in. You are going to start measuring whether or not this is happening, but I don't see anything under the objectives or the shared beliefs that I don't agree with already myself. I love the fact that you have in your mission statement, that, well, on your website, you mentioned that education is a key to a free society and democracy, and I think that's kind of the root of my whole political beliefs, is that without education, you have nothing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we will open it up. If any Board Member has a follow-up question or a question that didn't come up under either of the topics that we already did, it's open, just let me know, and I'll call on you. Betty?
Thank you. Now, although you may be selected to represent District Four, you still must look citywide, the entire district. Would you have a problem with that?
No, I think we had a similar thing on the Wichita City Council, is that we represented a district. I represented a district at that time, that was, we had just started the process of trying to. of trying to get downtown going again. And, I represented a district that was not interested in anything downtown. And, I basically tried to work with both parties to show the benefits of having a strong downtown. And then at the same time, I had to show the downtown people that even though I represented a district that wasn't interested in their causes, that I was interested in and I would help in any way I could. So, yeah, I, you represent your district, you do the very best you can for your district. But at the same time, you have to realize this is a, a, a school district that has many needs in once and, and your job as a board member is to do your best for everyone.
Thank you.
Joy?
I have a quick follow-up based on something you said when you were talking about board-to-board relationships and also when you were answering a couple of questions for Ms. Arnold. You talked a couple of times about other people needing to know what Stan Reeser thinks. And, I think you said something about how do you get others to go with you. This is not a gotcha question, I'm just really trying to understand. So, because nobody up here wants a Monday night fight, right? We can all agree, and I think we've done, at least the four years I've been on here, we haven't had a Monday night fight, so, good for us. However, there are times when different members of the board have different opinions about things. So, my question to you is, can you talk a little bit more about when do we need to hear from Stan Reeser and what does that look like and how would you do that if maybe you were the only one or one of two that had a different opinion than the rest of the board? What's the, well, I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah. Well, most of the time, if I was a single lone voice out there, ninety percent of the time, I would just keep it to myself. Because, it's obviously, you know, sometimes when you're on the, you know, an issue would come up and that maybe you're way ahead of that issue, or maybe you're way behind that issue. And, there's no need for the, for everyone to know exactly what's on every single thing on my mind. Now, I think there are cases though, if you do see something extremely troubling, it's your responsibility to speak out on it, even if you are the lone voice. So, it would be, I would say, it'd be rare, but hopefully, when, if it was something that I, I spoke out on, obvious, you'd, you would first say, instead of saying, oh, there goes Stan Reeser again, you would say, oh, Stan usually doesn't do this, maybe we ought to really actually listen to what my, he's, what he's saying, you know? Basically, you know, this, if you're going to speak out publicly about something and you're in the minority, then it better be, it really ought to be something important. Now, on the other hand, if I was to vote against something and I'm on the losing side and I know there was a controversy recently, I would at least explain my vote. I mean, not in a way to cause trouble, but if I'm going to vote, the public does have a right to understand why you voted that way.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
My follow-up question is, we are a huge district and you've obviously been on our website looking around, I can tell. But, the learning curve is just exponential when you first come on the board. What, this is kind of a question to help us help you. What, what kinds of things do you think would be important to be able to get information about, to be able to feel like I can hit the ground running as I'm brought onto this board?
Well, I think probably the biggest thing is, I would love to work with your financial and budget office a little more about getting more information on, on the budget. And, I think, again, I'm kind of a numbers guy, so the more numbers I get, the more information I get on that, on that kind of a thing, that's where I, I think I could hit the ground running faster. And I, and I think you've got, I think one of the thing I, I can bring to the school board is, I have the experience of being where you are right now, except I've also not been in your position for many, many years. And so, I have a combination of, of experience, but I think I can also bring, I'm new and improved.[926.51][926.51](Laughter) I guess that's what they would say in the laundry detergent ad.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Stan, the floor is yours, you can speak about anything you want to speak about and try and, or convince us where we need to go.
Well, I, I'm not, I won't take too much of your time because you still have two more people to talk to and I'm going to sit in the back and when they say something really good, I'm going to raise my hand and say, and if I have my hands raised, that means, I meant to say that too.[961.44][961.44](Laughter). But, in reality, I, I appreciate the effort all of you have made. This is not an easy job. I know there's no glamour in this for you, I know that you're doing this for community service and I want to emphasize, that would be, that's why I want my last words to, to you be, to be, is that this is about community service. And, if you, if I am lucky enough to be chosen by you, that's how I approach this job and that's how, and that's what attracted me to this job, is the chance to, to give even more back to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stan. We're going to now take about a fifteen-minute break, I know everybody, it's five o'clock and usually it's dinnertime and we scheduled this meeting because of the convenience of the room. So, we're going to take a fifteen-minute break and then we'll be back and, and have our second candidate. Call this meeting back to order. Our next interviewee would be Tanya Reepi. Hello, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
We are going to, each of us ask you a question, starting with Joy, down to Cheryl, and you, let you answer each one of those and then there'll be follow-up questions after that, and then we'll give you a, an opportunity to say whatever you'd like.
Okay.
Joy?
Well, it's nice to meet you, nice to meet you. Thanks for being here today and thanks for taking the time to apply and to really think about school boards and what they do, that's such an important job in our district and our city. So, really appreciate you taking the time to do that. All right, so I get to throw out the first question. Strong positive relationships with district key stakeholders play an important role in being an effective school board member, and past behavior can be a strong predictor of someone's future behavior. So, in looking at, I'm, by the way, I should have told you this, I'm talking about community involvement, okay?[1099.24][1099.24](Laughter) In relations, all right. So, we looked at your resume, or your application, everyone gave theirs, and you read about some of the things that you've done in having your children in public schools, which is awesome, commend you for that. But, outside of your child's school or classroom, how have you partnered with our district or common stakeholders that we have to serve our city and our community?
Well, I am an employee of Exploration Place, we do multiple outreaches. In fact, last night, I was at the Boys and Girls Club presenting one of our new curriculum for the new Design Build Fly. So, I taught the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders how to make a electronic circuit on an airplane to run DC motors and propellers. So, where, I was there last night, I have been out to, we do a lot of different places. And then over the summer, I of course taught the summer camp itself and so I provided and taught the tech curriculum for all of the kids and was able to hopefully get a couple inspired to go into a STEM-related hobby on the outside. I know I had a couple of kids say they started coding and making their own websites at home after camp. On top of that, I am also involved with the Confluence Community Center, they're on Commerce Street. They do a lot of different homeless outreaches, they've done the immigration celebration throughout the month of September, so I've helped a little bit with that. On top of that, I do run a nonprofit that is a science society. And so, I invite not only members, childrens from within our own group, but our neighbors and all that, and I let them come over to my house and make a giant mess, we've exploded bags, we've, we've done the elephant toothpaste and, so I don't care, I let my house get completely trashed, let these kids try out things that their parents probably wouldn't let them do in their own house. And so, just to try to, I feel like science is very important in getting that critical thinking and trying new things. And on top of that, I'm also involved with Dev ICT, the Women Who Code and Make ICT.
Great. All right, next, sometimes as a board member, we come across, well, there's all kinds of community members out there who agree with us and some who don't. And so, sometimes we're needing to work with a group of people who have differing opinions on an issue. So, what I'm wondering is, can you give us an example of a time you had to engage people who had different opinions about a topic? Maybe competing views, how you engaged them, what your part in that was, and maybe what the resolution was?
Well, part of what I do outreach, I'm trying to think, I mean, even within my own group, so I run a science society, so we have multiple different views. We have Democrats, Republicans, we have, we even have Christians, we have a couple agnostics and atheists within the group. And sometimes that creates a lot of conflict when you have a lot of people with such varying beliefs trying to find a common ground. And so, I do a lot of mediation between those people, trying to make sure it's always a welcoming community. So, so I've had to multiple times talk to people that we may have a very different core belief, but we're coming together for a common goal. And so, I always am strong to remind them that yes, we may fundamentally, fundamentally disagree on some of these things, but ultimately, we need to get here. And so, if we can put some of these things aside and just work on the outskirts of that to where we need to be, we're going to be a happier group and be able to grow a little bit larger and be able to reach more people.
Okay, great. Next question, can you talk to us about some key relationships that you fostered along the way and the things that might be beneficial to you if you were on the board, some key, key relationships?
Big one, Make ICT, I am very good friends with the Dom Kanari, if you all don't know him, he's a wonderful person. Him and I hang out a lot, we do a lot of game nights, so Make ICT is very big in the community, very, as you can tell, I'm very STEM-related, I do a lot of STEM activities. And so, Make ICT is a great organization, they love coming out to teach, they love coming out to volunteer with other people. And so, I, I'm friends with him and now James Lancaster as well. I accidentally partnered with Lake Afton during the last asteroid show, I accidentally made a Facebook, I didn't accidentally, I made a Facebook event for my private group and it got shared a thousand times. And Lake Afton had the highest turnout since their opening day, since they reopened. And so, I've now made some really good friends with Lake Afton and the observatory out there and, so that was kind of a, so I know Seth Duncan, he does their website and stuff from out there at Lake Afton and just, I'm very good friends with all of the teachers at my children's school, I have a very good working partner with Mrs. Banks, their principal and, and on top of that with the, oh, I'm so sorry.[1425.76][1425.76](Laughter).
It's okay, you're fine.
A little nervous.
We all are.
With the community center, so we help a lot, our goal is to get out there, we want to start helping teens and youth who are on the streets, we want to get out there with food trucks, community does brown bagging and so that's, we take the food and we brown bag it and then we take it out downtown and we start handing it out. And so, I feel like having those sort of influences and those sort of friends could be really beneficial for kids because it can lead opportunities for different schools to maybe, obviously not hand out, that wouldn't be safe, but they could come help bag, they can help come learn about, there is a whole city here that they can help, even though they're small and they're young, I've especially taught my kids that they are able to help doing these small things. So, I would say those things.
Okay, thank you very much.
Barb?
Thank you. I want to start in a different place because you're making me tired.
Oh.
And so, maybe that will help the problem, let's see.[1494.23][1494.23](Laughter). In addition to regularly scheduled meetings, the board requires approximately ten hours a week in reading, researching, miscellaneous, meetings, school visits, telephone calls, and email correspondence. Can you, can your schedule accommodate the extra time involved in serving as a board member?
Yes, right now with I do with EP is freelancing, so I do that in my own time. I just take all the tech at home to my kitchen table where it's all spread and then I make lessons planned and emails is in, so it gives a lot of free thought to my day. Because of right now, on top of what I do for EP, I'm also helping, I'm a wedding consultant for a friend, so her wedding is in October, it'll be ending soon, so I'm going to have a lot of free time actually coming up because I won't be on the phone with vendors and making arrangements for venues, but yes, definitely, and I love researching, you can, I get way, I love reading things and researching things, that's what, I, I have all these notebooks at home that I just store things in.
Now, I notice, I'm going to ask you something else in a question, but I'm going to come up with something first that you came up with.
Okay.
Okay. Educational background, a tech educator, Science Saturdays with young children, Kids' Day Out, instructor, active volunteer in children's classrooms. I would believe that you get up in the morning and you're ready to go and those kids are really what you're molding.
Yes, I, I love kids, that's, I was very fortunate to get the job at Exploration Place, it's, I've always loved, I've loved being able to be that mom to go to my kids' classrooms and, you know, be able to talk to the young kids there about what I do as, you know, as a female computer programmer and I'm also a mechanic in my spare time, I work on my own cars, so I get to tell the kids that and so they get so excited, so I love teaching kids so much.
That's great. I'm going to talk to you about board-to-board.
Okay.
We're the board, you are wanting to be on the board and very interested in the information you gave us. Do you think that the board relations is important for the success of the district and why?
Well, yeah, absolutely. You guys are making, you make a lot of, you have a very difficult job, you have to work within means that you have no control of. And those decisions that you make affect the entire district. And you make the best choices you can in very unfortunate circumstances that we're in right now. So, I feel like having that relationship between the board and the district is extremely important because you have to both be on the same page and put the greater good of the students and the teachers and even their parents before any of your own personal goals between the two of you. So, yeah, I feel like that relationship is extremely important.
And I have one more question and I won't come back for any more. Are you available to attend board meetings on Monday nights?
Yes.
Thank you.
Betty?
Thank you. And I have a two-part question. The category is board-to-supervisor-inships. Do you believe it is important to establish a positive relationship with the superintendent?
Yes.
Okay. And if so, then what steps would you take to ensure that that happened?
Well, obviously she's here today. She obviously probably gets a lot of concerns from different teachers and principals throughout the district. I feel like listening to her concerns and being able to see how they, not fit, but real, putting a lot of value in what she says, you know, even though we're the board, she is out there in the trenches, out with the kids, the teachers every day, that we don't get to see always. And so, I feel like letting her voice happen and letting her come up with her decisions and her thoughts is something very valuable that we should listen to. I'm, I, I, (laugh) sorry, a little bit floundering. But, yeah, no, I feel that's very important, I just feel like listening and back and forth and she understands that we have probably unfortunate circumstances that you have to make decisions with too. So, I feel like just listening to each other and communicating is always the best answer for that.
Okay, thank you.
Mine is on diversity.
Okay.
And, as you know, Wichita Public Schools is very diverse. What part does diversity play in the Wichita Public Schools?
I think it's great for young children especially, they start to learn at a very young age, interacting with kids in different backgrounds, different colors, different religious beliefs, that we're not all the same and I feel like that's, we're really wonderful. And I feel like that's, we're really wonderful in Wichita, where my kids go to school at Buckner and then my, even in my neighborhood, that to them, no one's different, they're your friend. You judge people solely on if they're nice to you and if they're not being, you know, as my daughter would say, a jerk. And I feel like that's really important and I feel like Wichita has a really good blend of that here. And I, and because kids are going to learn that at such a young age here and going into high school and middle school, high school, I feel like the bullying and the differences that a lot of teens face could be easily overcome just here in Wichita is because we are so diverse. Did I answer your question at all?
Yes, it did, thank you very much. Lynn?
Thank you, thank you, Tanya, good to meet you. Can you explain your experience with budgets and budgeting and your level of understanding of government financial matters and forms, some of the things we deal with?
Yeah, um, with budgeting, I do run a nonprofit, um, not a very, a well-funded nonprofit at that. And so I have to make a lot of decisions, um, mostly, we don't really have a treasurer, I am the board. And so I usually run a conference every year that I have to pay speakers, I take care of the fundraising for that myself. I pay all of, I take care of the website, um, the maintenance for that, um, any of the questions, we do weekly, our monthly meetings and all the science comes out of that, that budget. So I have to make sure that like on the Science Saturdays, I have to make sure I'm doing something that's kid-friendly, that multiple kids can do without breaking the bank for that every month. I have to sometimes make decisions not to have certain speakers or do certain activities my group would really love for me to do because it's not in the budget. As far as governmental, um, spending, that is probably the one area I don't have the most experience in. I would have to rely heavily on someone else's experience in that. I do know that we, I mean, we live in Kansas, we, it's always, and this is obviously what I hear from the news, so media, but we are in a budget shortfall, so we have to make decisions based on that budget and we can't, and it doesn't always make everyone happy. And I do understand that as a precedent, that sometimes you make decisions and no one's happy, but it's in the best interest of everyone. And I feel, I do understand at least that aspect, that you have to look at the greater good and the long-term goal. Because short-term may seem nice, and I know a lot of people like instant gratification, especially when it comes to money. But when you're looking at a school district, you have to think five, 10, 15 years down the line when you're making plans. So that's how I would see that.
Very good, thank you.
Hey, good evening, thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
I have a question on the strategic plan and I think you were given a copy of this when you came in. And I'm not going to quiz you over that, but I just wanted you to make sure that you had seen it. Because one of the responsibilities of the board is to help develop, along with the superintendent, the strategic plan for the district. And we, you responded to the mission statement in your application and thank you for doing that. But this is a little bit bigger than just the mission statement. And so I have a two-part question. First of all, how would you bring value to the strategic plan discussion?
I feel most of my value comes, and I have two very young children, my youngest is only in first grade. And I plan on staying to the district until she graduates high school. So I am in it for the long haul. And I feel like just the knowledge that I want the best result for my daughter, which from the time that she's now six to the time now she's 18, is probably very valuable, I feel is valuable because the strategic plan directly affects her for the next, what is that? I'm good at math. Six, 12 years. So that's 12 years that Wichita Public School District is going to be on my heart. And so I really feel my ideas on that strategic plan is going to be first priority, is going to be towards the kids and the districts.
Okay, thank you. And the second part of that question is, uh, Dr. Thompson is planning after the first of the year, when the board is all in place, to, uh, begin to develop the strategic plan with some, some things that can be done and measured and then bring that information back to the board. And as you look at this, because this is going to be the driving piece of the strategic plan, it may be modified in January, but it's going to be the driving piece. What would you suggest as modifications or expansions to this current strategic plan?
Sorry, I want to make sure I answer this correctly.
You're fine, we don't mind you taking some time, that's fine.
I feel maybe a little bit more emphasis on the 21st century skills with the, with the knowledge gap, especially in lower poverty areas or is going to be hard and I feel like that'd be a really good focus. I, I was a single, I, I am a single mom, I was a very poor single mom in the beginning. And finding, being able to afford the resources for my children to keep up with their other peers was extremely hard. And so I feel like a really good outreach and focus for lower incomes families with the technology would be extremely beneficial so those kids don't get left behind and the parents aren't always left with the struggle and the stress of not being able to give the best to their kids. Because that is very hard as a parent when you can't do it and knowing that you have a community behind your back would be very beneficial, I think.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, now we're going to open it up and questions can come from anybody on any topic. And we're going to start with Betty.
Well, Tanya, again, it was very pleasant meeting you. And my follow-up question is although you may be selected to represent District Four, um, you still must look citywide. Would that be problematic to you?
Well, technically my children don't go in District Four, so I guess not. They do go to Buckner, which is District One?
One.
Yes. So they do, so I am very much district-minded as, for one of the reasons I'm going on the board is I feel like we're a community, we're Wichita. I love Wichita, so we're a community.
Thank you.
Joy?
I have a question for you, um, in thinking about our listening sessions that are coming up. You're out there, you know people, um, this isn't necessarily what you think, but what have you heard people saying, moms or dads or others, that would be challenges that might show up in some of the listening sessions? That would be challenges for Wichita Public Schools?
I think the big one is the start times, a lot of the parents aren't happy about that, bottom line. On one hand, I understand, like I don't, luckily my kids are still in elementary school, so they don't have to be at school until 8:40. But I know for middle school and high schoolers, it's extremely early. And, but not knowing how that affects the budget exactly, not knowing all that, that's going to be a hard thing, I think, to cross is, especially if we look at the numbers and it's in the best interest, a lot of parents are going to still be upset that never gets changed. But if it's in the best, you know, when we're looking at doing a strategic plan and trying to get everyone up to par together, you have to cut things and I feel, I feel like the early mornings is what I hear the most of.
Okay, thank you.
Cheryl?
Okay, this is kind of, you're giving us some information so we could help you if you were selected for the board. What would you need, because obviously the district is a huge district, lots of things going on, lots of information needed. And what kinds of things would you think you would like from us in order to be able to hit the ground running if you became selected for this board?
I would probably look, want to look at first, um, where a lot of our, maybe sponsors probably isn't the right word for public schools, but where a lot of the people who help us, where in the community do we get a lot of the help? And I would feel like reaching out to them and if they have partners, reaching out to them. So I just feel like who is partner with us and who supports us and see if we can grow a broader base with that. I've found that having a lot of friends makes life a lot easier.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, at this time, it's, the floor is yours, you can say and talk about whatever you'd like. And if you have questions for us, we'd be happy to answer those also.
I don't know if I really have any right now, I mean, um, how exactly does the relationship work between the superintendent and the board? I did my own guesses and my own speculations, but they might not have been correct at all. And I've already answered the question.
How does it work?
Yeah.
Hopefully we, it works very well. Hopefully. But you actually hit on a key point, I mean, there, you have to respect the role that we've asked the superintendent to, to play. But also you have to be mindful of the role that you are elected to do. And finding that balance, I think, is unique to every board member. But always, always with the communication and the respect, I think everything else falls in place.
All righty, is there anything else you'd like to add before we turn you loose?
Not really, I just, I was, I'm really glad that I decided to do this and as you can tell, I, I love Wichita, I'm very active in the community. And I feel like this is the, one of the best places to raise, I mean, you have this wonderful town with all this stuff, but the small-town community. So I love raising my kids here and I, they have wonderful friends, so I'm really glad I even had a chance to come up here and talk.
All right, thank you very much. Mike, we're ready for the last. Next we have Josh Blick, thank you very much for coming tonight. We're going to ask you questions down this way.
Okay.
And then we'll come back with individual questions after that and then you'll have a chance to, uh, speak on whatever you'd like to speak to close out. We'll start with Joy.
Hi, Josh.
Hello.
It's been a while since I've seen you. Good to see you tonight, I'm starting the questions, so, uh, thanks for taking the time to apply. And we've, uh, had a really great group of people turn out tonight. So I'm going to start by asking you some questions about community relationships, okay? Strong positive relationships with district's key stakeholders play an important part in being an effective school board member. And past behavior can be a strong predictor of someone's future behavior. So I was wondering if you could tell us, um, we looked at your, um, application and then I trust everyone got the attachment that, um, Dr. Mike sent out later where it talks about your community involvement, because that's what it said, see attachment, and then I was like, oh, there's no attachment, so I'm glad that showed up. But outside of your child's school or classroom, can you tell us how you've partnered with our district or our common stakeholders of the district to serve Wichita?
Yes, I sure can. Most, what I've been able to accomplish over the years is kind of, this is actually one of the hardest questions for me. Cause I was raised, um, by a mother that, um, you don't, the left hand doesn't know what the left, the right hand does. And so a lot of, a lot of, when you see that laundry list of all the things that I've done and accomplished, it's been, it's been very rewarding, but then it's, I didn't want to be too prideful. So that's why it, this is one of the hardest questions. I've been, received some opportunities where I have been in a position, uh, South High School, they've came to our neighbor association. We partnered with them, um, to, uh, to do their cross-country run, um, a couple of years in a row for volunteers and support financially. And then also, uh, Kelly School, um, down south, we were able, the neighborhood association and myself, we were able to, um, kind of fill the gap when it came to, uh, students, um, lunch, where they had, uh, an undue balance and so we were able to help them in the community. And then we've also been able to, and myself, been able to just partner with the local schools in, in my area as in being, um, kind of, kind of fill the gap type of thing. And it's been, teachers will call us and say, hey, we have a need. A lot of these needs might be pretty large, some of them are pretty small, but we've been able to, um, provide those needs and help them in the, in the district. And it's been a blessing and it's been rewarding, not as in a rewarding for a personal gain, it's been a rewarding just to see that we're able to help the students. And then also on another level, we, I'm a part of this organization called Convoy of Hope. And it's a, it's a really unique organization where it's a local church and a lot of organizations that came together. And they give up to about a million dollars worth of backpacks, school supplies, haircuts. And when you see students that are in our area, and we are a working-class neighborhood, um, that the need is there and the hope, it just, that's what really motivates you to do even more. That's what motivates you to, uh, when someone says it can't be done, to see that as a challenge and an opportunity to make it happen. And I think that for whatever the school district does already and being able to pull from community resources, from, from businesses to neighbor associations to just even parents, knowing that there's a need that's out there and just the smallest little bit can make a large impact on the district.
Okay, so I'm going to take a little bit different jog over here and I'm going to assume, well, when we work with community members, sometimes they disagree with us, sometimes they agree with us, they're all over the board. And I don't mean all over the, I mean, they're all over. And sometimes they're all over us too. So I'm wondering if you can talk about a time when you had to engage people who had a different opinion or different thoughts or maybe bring a group of people who had differing opinions together and got them to work together for a common purpose? Tell us how you did it and what happened.
Actually, it just happened recently in the last two years, back in 2015, uh, my daughter was a senior at, uh, West High School and she was class president. And she seen that, uh, actually she was, first week of school, she was in a car wreck right at the school. A couple of students ran across, car stopped, she was in the front, she was a passenger and the car rear ended them. And she said, there's no crosswalks, there's no, um, there's no signage, nothing around West High. So I worked with Mr. Davis and formed a partnership and both of us went together with, with USD 259 and we had meetings with, uh, Joel, the principal, and then also City of Wichita. City of Wichita, it came down to funding, of course, like everything. And so, um, and who should pay for it? City of Wichita said the USD owned both sides of the street, they need to pay for it. And it should have been a partnership between, and that's what we took a step back and said, you know what? Instead of us as a community or myself, let's, let's have the students do it. So my, my daughter and four other students came together, they built the plan, they, they went out to all the neighbor associations, the community, sat down with Mr. Davis, the school board, or, I mean, not school board, but the, uh, city council members for that district. And we pulled it all together and within two years, we were able to get a crosswalk that was paid by the city. We've also gotten sidewalks and we've also been able to get signage all the way around this as it's a school zone. So it was a very success. The students, of course, teaching them that it's not instant, things take process and things take time. And learning from that, also myself, I was able to learn that dealing with larger organizations, instead of just calling a council member or a school board member and says, I want this now, you, I learned there's processes that we need to follow by when it comes to budgeting and stuff like that. So it was, it was a success and they, and a success for the school district, so. And the safety of our children, that's what it comes down to.
Okay, final question. Can you tell us about some key relationships you've fostered along the way that if you were on the board would be beneficial to you and to the rest of the board?
I've been a part of a lot of organizations, I've been a part of different, a lot of different boards. One thing I've learned over the One thing I've learned over the years that it's, everything's not so black and white when it comes to the benefit of what, of an organization. And so when, what I mean by that is, is some organizations are driven just for their own purpose, and some are more broad for the whole city of Wichita. And so a lot of the organizations I've been a part of and been able to work with, we've been able to pull resources, even though everybody is a, there's so many nonprofits, and there's so many caring people in Wichita. But they also see that there's other needs. So if they don't have, we were able to use a nonprofit that feeds homeless people. And we were able to also use some of their resources, like their coolers, cookers, and other things for, for when we do a neighborhood cookout. Or also, we did a, we did a cleanup for the, we use students, and we also use the, we use the, the, I'm sorry, I just had the organization, I apologize. And we were partnered all together. And it's just being able to open your eyes and then ask the question, do you have resources? Do you have, and I think that's what would make it beneficial for myself also, is being on the board, is being able to, all the relationships I've had over the years, and being able to kind of bridge the gap in between USD 259 and working with the superintendent and saying, we have, I have some of these resources, do you have any need for them? And I think that's what it comes down, is working with staff, working with our superintendent, and making sure that, that, that information is out there, that parents will know, and then also organizations will know that there's a need that's, that needs to be filled.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Barb?
Thank you. I'm gonna talk with you about the board, serving on the board.
Thank you.
Or being in the position that you're in right now. And I'm sure you probably already know where we're gonna head. Do you think that board relations is important for the success of the district, and why?
Definitely, Ms. Fuller. I've been on many different boards where not a lot of members see eye to eye.
We'll see eye to eye, how's that do?
Yes. Definitely. I've always been the type of person that says, you know, I need to put myself in their shoes first before I take a prejudged notion or something that says that I think that this is what my goal or, or what I want. Because sometimes I've had a, I've, I've went through a process, and I said, this is what has to happen. And then, and then I started listening to other board members, and I was like, wow, you're right. There's, we have to work, I think, what I thought was right wasn't right. And so, and so that's where it comes down, is working with your board members. Because everybody that's on the board and every single individual that's up here right now, I think, has a common goal, and that is to make sure for the best of the student and the district. And I think working together is, is where it's at. I mean, I can give you lip service up here and say, oh, it's all peachy. But we all know, behind closed doors, there's gotta be some hard decisions. And I think that working together for the common goal of the student is where it should be at.
I'm gonna go to number four in your responses. In your opinion, what is the role of the Board of Education? I'm now going to give you your answer back and then see how you support that. Support the staff and superintendent with the goals of the district and provide a safe environment for our students.
Definitely. I think the role of, of a school board member is to make sure that the safety of the students is key. From there on, is being able to be open-minded and saying, you know what? Let's work with our, our staff, our superintendent. They are probably the one of the smartest people in Wichita. I am, when it comes to certain things, I might not be the sharpest knife when it comes to budgets.
You are, though.
So, I'm sorry, not the budgets, and I know Lynn's gonna get me, so. So, but, but when it comes to it, is leaning, is learning from our staff, learning from our superintendent that's been in this role, and then also from the board members that have an expertise, and then trying to make the best judgment for their students. I think it's, it's probably, one of the hardest things is to be on that other side. And especially when you're talking about lives and our future. And I think that the role of that is a very serious role. And then also being able to be very open-minded and supportive of our staff and being able to listen to them and saying, you know what? We need, this is probably the best thing for the, for the district, and besides, of any personal input, so.
I'm, I'm gonna, I wanna read one more.
Okay.
Because it comes to what I read earlier to you.
Definitely.
Why do you want to be a USD 259 board member? As a leader in South Wichita, I believe that I could help bridge our schools with our community. And you're so active in that community, it's really a connection that could be made immediately, almost.
Definitely.
My thought.
No, definitely. I think when it comes down to it is, we all have, every single one of us in the world has some part to play. And I think when it comes down to it is, is working with our community. We, and we, I can get into the whole standpoint, there is, there's budget shortfalls. And there, and there's some hard decisions to deal with a budget.
Right.
And I'm sorry. But when we come down to it, it's, when we come down to it, it, it comes down to our communities. They are the ones that are gonna be able to help us fill that gap.
Exactly.
And I think bridging together and having these partnerships, there's a lot of great companies that are out there that are contributing right now. So I'm not to dement all any of these corporations. But there's a lot of corporations that could do more or don't even know. I have a friend that is a CEO of a company, a corporation on South Wichita. And he wants to do things, but he just doesn't know where resources or where he can go and be able to provide, so. And it's just being able to have that communication with our community.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller.
Betty?
My category is board-to-supernintendent relationships. My question has two parts. Do you believe it is important to establish a positive relationship with the superintendent? And if the answer is yes, how would you, what steps would you take to establish that relationship? If the answer is no, then tell me why not?
Definitely, it would be a big yes. I've seen it, I'm on site council for West High, and I'm on the Booster Club of West High. Recently, I've seen that the, Ms. Thompson has gave direction down for the staff, and then also for principals, and then down to site council, when it comes to what her goal, and then also the strategic plan that's coming out. And we were, we've able to do some workshops with, kind of like what the teachers are doing, where we're able to get feedback. And the great thing of what I've been able to see so far is that feedback is going up to Ms. Thompson, Dr. Thompson, but then it's also gonna be put in place. So I think that being able to have that, that, that plan and that resources that are out there, but then also being able to work with our superintendent, because she's our eyes and ears to our classrooms, our schools, and then, and also our communities. And I think working with the superintendent is probably the most amazing thing that I've seen so far, especially with USD 259. I've seen in other organizations where the county man, the superintendent sits over off to the side with the staff. I've seen the city manager sits off to the side. I see the relationship that the superintendent has with the board, and it is probably the best one in the state of Kansas. Because the superintendent with the school board work together, they talk, and they feel, they look like they feel like you are, are, sad, are trying to think the right words, like a family. And it's, you guys are trying to do the best you can as a family role. And I think that's definitely my answer.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, mine is on diversity. As you know, Wichita public schools are very diverse. What part does diversity play in the Wichita public schools?
It's 100%. That's our kids, our lives. I have a, a personal story. My son has ADHD. As a parent, we found this out when he was three years old, and, or in third grade. We were noticed in some problems in school, touching, personal connection and so forth. Sat down with the principal, she said, you might wanna look into this. We have amazing teachers. She said, my son has this, and what, what do you think? And so we went and sat down with a doctor, found out my son has ADHD, has a 504 plan. We started working with the school and started finding out ways that, what we could do as parents to improve ourself. And it was, it was really unique to see that, as a father, I was, I was raised to parent one way and to discipline one way. And, and so I continued that on. And I found out I had to change myself as a father, and then also as a, as a discipliner in the house. I took a step back. It was the, the, I had to humble myself very greatly when it came down to that. And patience is probably the most important thing when I, when I had to deal with my son in his disability. But it is now to this, we just had parent-teacher conference last night, and he's straight-A student and doing amazing things. And knowing that, when we seen that early, and not to, where he wouldn't have to worry about it as in students were looking at him or judging him or, or teachers, I think that being able to, to work with the school and the partnership, they were very open-minded. And I think carrying that on to all races, to all disabilities, to all everything, and social status, it is, we have to be definitely open-minded and willing to accept our students, because these are our future, and our, these are, these are the future generation of the world, so. And I think accepting them within all, everything, diversity is, is key when it comes to our, our schools.
All righty, thank you very much. Lynn?
I don't know why you thought I had to have a budget question, so, so I'm gonna have to change it. I'm gonna say, my question's gonna be, can you explain the budget in 50 words or less? So, no, I'm just, no, actually, actually. Can you explain to us just your experience with budgeting overall? And then just any experience that you have with government budgeting or financial matters?
Definitely. I started dabbling into the budget about two years ago, and then, to be honest with you, I got a headache. So, for what you guys do, and I know, I know you guys lean on, on the staff, and it's amazing. But I started looking at some of the resources, and I was like, oh, they're top-heavy, and they're this and that. And so I was like, so I started getting that preconceived notion of what it is. And then I started asking questions, and I started asking some questions to principals and teachers. And then the eye, I mean, my, it lit up. And then I was like, I see what they're going through. And, and I see the, the struggles that they have to do on the, on per student in the classroom. And so I, I've been on a, a numbers, different boards. And I had to make a really hard decision probably about four years ago. And when it came to budgets, I fell back to that. I was on a CSBG block grants, Community Service Block Grant, for City of Wichita. And it came down to something very simple. It was a marketing budget. They had about $2,000 in marketing budget. And we were like, oh, it's an easy cut, we don't have to go and give Chotzkis away and pens and everything else. The next year, we got slapped in the face. Because we didn't know that all that budget was kids' shirts for summer discovery program that were paid out of that. So kids did not have the shirts that were needed. And then there was also a bouncy thing that the kids didn't have the resources. So as soon as we, I found that out, I was like, you know what? If I'm gonna make a decision to cut, and when it comes to budgets, you know, I, I know the district, you guys are down to the bone. And there's gonna have to be some, some very hard decisions. But I think pulling community resources together, but going back to that, is when I realized that it, it comes down to, when you make the, have to make those decisions, you better make sure what the final outcome is, and ask the questions. Because a lot of times, when you're looking at the line items, you're just looking at numbers, not seeing faces behind them. And that's what it is. Every single line item has a face, has a life, has a future, and so forth, and being able to work with those.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Logan.
My question is on strategic planning. And I hope that you got this copy.
Yes, I sure did.
Okay. I'm not gonna ask you questions on that, but I just wanted to have you make sure that you'd had an opportunity to see it. Because one of the responsibilities of the school board is to help set the strategic plan for the district. And obviously, this lays out our beliefs, it talks about our mission statement, and it shows our objectives. Superintendent Thompson is planning to expand this to be able to put the work that needs to be done and the measurement that needs to be done to be able to reach these objectives and goals. So my question is, how would you bring planning to, being valued to this strategic planning discussion? Sorry about that.
I had the same issue with that word. I think the, the neatest thing is about, about three weeks, weeks ago, when I was on site council, not only did we hear the plan for the first time on site council, it was our first meeting, we were, we, last year, we averaged probably about five parents. This year, we had 15 parents. So it was really neat to see that. And then on top of that, it wasn't just that we were interacting and we were, we were really excited about the plan. But then to see the principal and the teachers, and teachers coming in, and they were like, oh, we had a great, we had posted notes, and we were doing, they're excited. Because it's, it's hard when you wanna have a goal and, and you wanna have a, a new program, because change is hard. And, and I know this because I've been a part of a lot of organizations, from youth to seniors. And a lot of times, we're getting set in our set way, we get very complacent. And change is very hard. But to see that they are excited, that's gonna fall right into the students, right into the parents, and then build it from there. So I think that she, Dr. Thompson has an amazing plan. And I think it's gonna make it really easy for the board to be able to get out there, because the buy-in is already there. And I think that reinforcing that buy-in and being in there to be supportive of Dr. Thompson and her staff, and, and making sure that her goals are, are being able to be set, and then also being able to be successful in the future.
Good. A follow-up is, what would you suggest as modifications or expansion of our current strategic plan?
I would, my favorite part is communities. So, but I think that just being able to have that resources to, to give to, more of like an advertising resource to get out to the public, to parents, to businesses, and saying, we have a new plan. Right now, it's going great, because I'm hearing it, I'm seeing it, and I'm feeling it. But then being able to carry that outside of the district to local businesses and saying, these are some, and being excited where you're, kind of like a show-and-tell or like a tour, where the superintendent can go to businesses, I know your job's very, you got, you probably don't have very much time. But just being able to get that direction out to the general public, and then allowing them to see that, yes, they're, not only are their kids going for eight hours to 10 hours a day, and they're just, you know, there is some goals that are being there, and there's some passion and so forth, so.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely, thank you.
All right, now we're gonna open it up to just regular questions. Any board member can ask you a question, and, or if you have any questions you wanna ask us, we'd be happy to, to do that also. We're gonna start with Betty.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate your being here. And although you might be selected to represent District Four, you still would have to look at the entire Wichita public school system. Would that be problematic for you?
No, definitely not. I love District Four. I've had a great relationship with Mr. Davis and partnerships. But then, my son, he goes out of the district, he's actually in Jardine School. He, he was supposed to go to Allison, and then he went to the Choice Fair. And seeing that they have 3D printers and iPads and all the really cool toys, and so he's very driven for engineering. But seeing that there's so much when it comes to resources throughout the district, and how they can pull, and being able to find students' passions, because not everybody, not every student fits in a square, a square box or in a peg. It's being able to say, you know what, you're in this area, but guess what? There's some other opportunities that's gonna motivate your son or your daughter. Because mine was gaming, of course, like all students now, is a lot of video games. So he is very technology-driven right now. But in our district, we have, in our district, we have some amazing schools. But then we have some traditional magnets. And so we started him with a traditional magnet, and seeing that we had to look outside of our district, and still, it's within the, the school board and the school district. So it was pretty neat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
Yes. One of the things, obviously, we are a very large district with lots of different kinds of information that you're gonna have to learn and absorb. So this is kind of our question to us, to you, is what could we do, if you're selected for this board, to be able to give you the information that you might need to hit the ground running?
I think it's time and patience. I know when I say time. I know when I say time, that would, and you have a lot of, you probably don't have very much time, so. But time with Dr. Thompson and learning the roles of, of what staff does in different departments and, and resources to be able to help support Dr. Thompson. But then also as the board is being able to have time with Lynn. I know you're an expert when it comes to budget, I've been here many a times and I've seen you. Is sitting down with, with Lynn or, and in learning, that's, that's key. My brain is like a sponge. I didn't have a formal education. The opportunities weren't there for me at the time, single parent and some other things. But when I came down to saying that, somebody told me one time I couldn't do something. And then when that happened, it actually made me drive to say, you know what? It's, it's opportunities to be able to keep myself out there. And so I grew and that's why I've been on so many different boards to learn. It's, that's what it is. I'm not, I, I never see myself as an expert when it comes to this. I see myself as being able to get people the right information or get information or communicate or get to them. My, my favorite line is not what you know, it's who you know. And then who you know to get what you need to know. And when it comes down to it, it comes down to relationships. And I think building that relationships with the board and then also Dr. Thompson and the staff. And I think that's, it's very key. Because that's, that's what's gonna make that position a successful position and being able to have that voice of South Wichita right there in that chair.
Thank you.
Joy?
All right, I have one more question for you. This isn't necessarily what you think, but you're out there in the community. Dr. Thompson is starting her strategic listening sessions. So if you were gonna go to one of those, what would you predict that some community, community members might say are biggest challenges as a district?
I think that's the same with all organizations. When it comes to it is being able to be open-minded. A lot of times, organizations, like you said earlier, they wanna go in full force. This is what we want, we want the recognition, we want this and that. But a lot of organizations have that heart to say, you know what? We don't need the, we don't need the recognition, we need to be able to help fill that gap. And I think that the biggest challenge is probably being able to have, when you have two organizations coming together, is being able to, to bridge that gap as in a handshake or a pat on the back and being able to say, you know what? We have the same goal and that same goal is that student. And being able to, because sometimes one goal might be financial, one goal might be products or services. But bringing together is having, is having both those, being willing to have an open mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Josh, at this time, we'll give you the floor. You can give us anything you'd like to hear and kinda finish up.
Great. I just, I, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I really appreciate the, being able to carry my views, but then more importantly, carry my, the voice to this board. Mr. Davis has been a pillar down in our community. Every event that I go to, when it's school-related, I see Mr. Davis there and he's been, and it's, it's great to see that face with those schools and at sporting events and everything. But then being able to have that open communication has been, has really been an eye-opener. Because sometimes when you're a citizen, it takes a lot for you to go up there, at to that podium and be able to speak your heart and your mind and everything. Because you guys have probably been here where there's people breaks down and so you feel for them. But you know that what you have to do is best for the student and for the district. But being able to have Mr. Davis that was in our community and he was very open. He would always take my phone calls and say, yep, what project you wanna work on now? And so it was just being able to have that openness. And I think that's what, that's what all of these, all of you board members have been very gracious, I bet, in your district and been able, if, if Mr. Davis has carried it, I know it's been, it'll be carried on through you guys. I see this position not as a stepping stone. A lot of people look at school boards, I've had probably 100 calls and they said, why do you wanna run for school board? You know, why do you want this position, it doesn't pay? And I'm like, if it doesn't pay, I'm like, it's about the student. It's, when you have a personal connection, you have more of an impact in, in local politics and local, from the local schools. To be able to work together and build relationships and fill those gaps is key. And so I see this as more of a pinnacle. I see this as the ultimate position, not as a stepping stone that a lot of politicians have seen in the past and so forth. Just to get name recognition. I see it as, what can we do to, to bridge those gaps? What can we do to build our stronger communities? Because when it comes down to it, it's all about our kids. I see it in my kids. We could've put them in private schools, whatever, but when it comes down to it, the public is, is amazing. From the resources to the, the teachers. The, the, the most amazing thing and the most proudest moment I had was to see my daughter walk across the stage. She's at Pitt State right now in her second year and she's actually decided to be an educator and be a teacher. And so she's gonna be a fax teacher, she loves it, she, with her passion. And I support her 100%. Besides, everybody else that says, oh, they don't make money, they don't, you know what? The passion, if the heart's there and, and the dedication's there, the, and what the impact you're able to go and make a difference in a child's life is, is key. So definitely, thank you so much for your time and I appreciate your patience with me, so.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to talk to the people out in the world and say that we'd like your feedback from tonight. Hopefully you, this will be posted on our website through YouTube so that everybody is available to see it. Also, our board members that are current have our addresses, telephone numbers and emails on there. We would like some community feedback so that we can make a better decision based on community feedback also after you've watched this video. And then Monday night at our special board meeting, we will make a decision based on the facts. And at this time, I have a comments from Lynn?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to, to add again to the community, we don't make this kind of an appointment very often. I think this is the second time in the 16 and a half years that I've been on the board. And this position will serve District Four for the next two years. So it's a very important decision, it's one that will make a, a big impact on District Four. And what I'm excited about is I see three really strong candidates. I think any of the three would serve our board and our community very well. There's different strengths and weaknesses. And I appreciate the time that we're gonna have for a couple days to, to look at these notes and their applications and, and review. And it's gonna be a tough decision. So I just wanted to make sure that the community knows we're gonna take it very serious. So thank you all for, for being here and opening up and I know it's, it's not easy. And it's, you're, you're gonna make us a better board and you're gonna make the, the community a better board by being here as well. So thank you.
Joy?
I have a couple questions for you, Mr. Verdi, just quickly. And one is, or in this one maybe for Superintendent and her staff. Can you send us an email when the video is available so that we can share within our own social media? So that we can hear feedback from people?
That would be through Mike.
Okay, Dave Mike?
Staff is not engaged, he, he will be the one sending out anything, so if, we can work with Mike.
All right, great. If we could just get that, then we can share it out. Because I think that's a great idea to get community feedback. And my second question is, when I looked at the agenda for Monday, we didn't, I don't remember if we talked about this at our last meeting and I wasn't clear about what the process will be when we come Monday. So I'd like to maybe find out if you know what that is or if we need to decide what that is.
Sure. What we will do Monday, when it's time to vote, we can have comments before and then we can vote and it'll be voting just like we did for president and vice president. We'll hand out a ballot with the names on it and you'll choose the person that you want. And it'll take four votes to, to pass the motion. And at that point in time, the, the chosen person would become a board member.
Okay, just to clarify, when we, we are gonna have time for comment beforehand so we can discuss and talk about who or what we think?
Yes.
If we so desire. And secondly, when we vote on ballot, those ballots are public, so whoever we vote for, it's not a secret.
Yeah, we'll turn those into Mike and Mike will tell him just like we do the president and vice president. And, and they'll be read just like they were when I was elected president a couple months ago.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, any other questions? Mike, next item.
Adjournment.
So moved?
Second.
It was moved by Betty and I think seconded by Lynn.
Everybody.
And everybody else.
Everybody else, that's right.
Looks like it passes 6-0, we can go home.